Good evening, everyone. All of council on looking through to see Mrs. Clark. Mr. Bliss, Mr. Bliss, okay. All right. Excuse me, Mr. Giddings. All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is the regular council meeting of September 28th. The time is 7:30. Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Councilman Bliss. Councilman Bliss.
Mr. Bliss, you're on mute.
Let's see. All right, we'll go back. Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah.
Councilman Corbett?
He was here, he lost power, but he's on his way back.
Thank you.
Councilman Giddings?
Here.
Councilor Warback? She must be on mute.
She may have also lost power, I don't see her.
Okay, Mayor Portem Soltis?
Okay, Emily and Bob Corbett, both and Dave Soltis, all lost power, so their Wi-Fi went out, but it is now back on, but all of their Wi-Fi routers are reconnecting, so they all should be rejoining throughout the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Mayor Grabstein?
I'm here, thank you. I was actually having issues until exactly 7:30. So, all right, well, we'll start the meeting and then we'll just, we'll make a note that they-
I'll note when they attend.
All right, thank you. I will be doing the invocation this evening and then we will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight marks the ending of Yom Kippur. It means it's been 10 days since the start of the Jewish New Year, and it's commonly referred to as the High Holiday. So my invocation tonight is the last half of a letter written in the 1790s by George Washington to the Hebrew congregations of Newport, Rhode Island, to reassure those who had fled religious tyranny that their life in their new nation would be different. I took this as my inspiration. "It is now no more that toleration is spoken of as if it were the indulgence of one class of people that another enjoyed the exercise of their inherent natural rights. For happily, the government of the United States, which gives to bigotry no sanction, to persecution no assistance, requires only that they who live under its protection should demean themselves as good citizens in giving it on all occasions their effectual support. May the children of the stock of Abraham, who dwell in this land, continue to merit and enjoy the goodwill of the other inhabitants, while everyone shall sit in safety under his own vine and fig tree, and there shall be none to make him afraid. May the Father of all mercies scatter light and not darkness upon our paths and make us all in our several vocations useful here and in his own due time and way, everlastingly happy. Signed, George Washington." Please rise if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Mrs. Rottman, are the other members of council back?
Dave is in the waiting room and Bob Corbett is in the process of calling in, and Emily has rejoined.
I'm here too.
So we're just waiting for Mr. Corbett to call in. Is Mr. Soltis there then?
Yeah, Your Honor, yeah, I'm sorry, it was a-
Not just you. Wasn't just you, Mr. Soltis, we lost half of council. So you're fine, I just, I wanted to check in. All right, so up next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions for the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. The first one is National Bullying Prevention Month Proclamation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Sorry, I'm trying to get Bob set with the phone number. Okay, the Human Relations and Equity Commission has recommended City Council proclaim October as National Anti-Bullying Month. And the proclamation, whereas the organization Stomp Out Bullying and the United States Department of Education Initiative StopBullying.gov recognizes October as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. And whereas bullying, including cyberbullying, is an increasing problem that negatively impacts both children and adults, leading to potential mental health issues, physical health complaints, decreased academic achievement, substance use, and even suicide. Whereas bullying can take on many different forms, including verbal bullying, saying or writing mean things, social bullying, hurting someone's reputation or relationships, and physical bullying by hurting someone's body or possessions. And whereas children and adults in the community can help prevent bullying by talking about it, building a safe environment, and responding quickly in consistency to bullying behavior. And whereas to find out more information about what resources are available to help parents, educators, teens, and the community develop effective solutions on how to respond to all forms of bullying, as well as educating kids and teens in school and online, go online to StopBullying.gov and StompOutBullying.org. And whereas the Human Relations and Equity Commission and City Council desires to raise awareness of bullying as a serious problem and encourage efforts to stop bullying behavior in the community, now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Madison Heights, Michigan, that the month of October is hereby declared as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Madison Heights, and that the community and the Human Relations Equity Commission is encouraged to assist in raising awareness of bullying and stand up to bullying in Madison Heights. And we have a video from the Madison Elementary School's Kindness Club, and we also have a speaker that wished to address that. I didn't see for sure if she was on.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hello, I want to start by thanking everyone for the work you do day in and day out for our wonderful city. My name is Crystal Beaver. I live at 898 East Roland. I am a parent to five amazing kids in the Madison School District. Tonight, I have the pleasure to introduce you to an amazing group of kids we have in our school that organized the Madison Elementary Kindness Club. I want to share some of the amazing things these kids have joined together to accomplish. This is a student-led group here at our school. They design, develop, and execute all of their own ideas. Some of the things our students did last year was create posters and hang them all over the school. These posters have positive quotes about kindness, what kindness means to them, positive and encouraging messages for our students and staff. They have stuck random notes in teachers' mailboxes, left treats for teachers, picked up trash on the playground, and many random acts of kindness throughout the school. They even involved their principal to share random acts of kindness to challenge their classmates to participate. They have spent their recess writing random notes of encouragement and posting them on lockers to surprise and uplift their classmates. Tonight, you will watch a presentation that our children put together for you on cyberbullying. While many kids were enjoying their break throughout the school day, this group of kids were meeting on Zoom with their teachers to come up with ways to spread kindness and be an encouragement to others while being virtual. It is our hope that we learn what people can do when they set their minds at changing the world to make it a better place for all. Thank you for your time.
You said there was a video, Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, it takes a second to get it up and going.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Snazek, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Madison Elementary. This video is to introduce our student-created kindness club. Last year, a group of students at our school saw the need to create a kindness club, and they began doing random acts of kindness throughout our building. This year, some of those students are in my class, so I reached out to them to see if they'd be interested in starting up kindness club again. So far, they have created digital posters to send to our hard-working staff, and they have more acts of kindness planned for this year. We recently discussed Bullying Awareness Month and also talked about cyberbullying. I asked the kids to respond to these three questions. One, what is cyberbullying? Two, why is it important for Madison Heights to make October Cyberbullying Awareness Month? And three, what should you do if you experience cyberbullying or if you see someone else experiencing it? Here are some of their responses.
Hi, my name is Madison Beaver, and I want to talk about a problem that I had last year. There was a group of people being mean to me and some of my friends, and almost every day from school I would come home crying. And I thought about it, and I thought that I should do a kindness club. And I, and what we did was we put encouraging notes in the teachers' mailboxes. We put like signs all around the school that say encouraging words. Notes on their things telling them how beautiful they are and how nice they are. And-
So who's in the kindness club?
A couple of my classmates and a couple of classmates from the other classes. So, cyberbullying, that's what we did. Okay, so, why is it important of Madison District of cyber, cyber-
Bullying.
It, and October. So, basically, we did it because people are being mean to each other. They're like saying names, they're doing all that. So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Max. And in the kindness club, we're going to talk about cyberbullying. Cyberbullying is when one person bullies another person on the internet.
Why should Madison Heights make October Cyberbullying Awareness Month?
Madison Heights should make October Cyberbullying Awareness Month so people are aware to stop cyberbullying.
What would you do if you were being cyberbullied or saw somebody else being cyberbullied?
If I saw someone being cyberbullied, I would say, I would help him out and say, hey, you're cyberbullying this guy. I don't know why you're cyberbullying him, but you shouldn't do that. It's hurting his feelings, I'm thinking.
What would you do if you were cyberbullied?
If I was cyberbullied, I would say, please stop cyberbullying me. I don't like it. And I don't want you cyberbullying anymore. And in the kindness club, we're going to try our best-
Hey.
Okay, I thought that was working, but clearly now I know it did not.
Well, we heard it, but I don't think anybody saw it. Is it on our website, or will it be going up on our website? Or can we somehow-
It should have been on Facebook Live. It worked great on my computer.
Well, okay. Technology. Is it something we can put a link in the minutes of this meeting to-
Yeah, we- Link it on the Facebook side as well.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. Thank you for that presentation. I think we're just going to do the vote on the proclamation. So what is the wish of council? This is the proclamation that October would be National Bullying Prevention Month. Does anyone want to make a motion? Councilor Warback?
Yeah, I move that council accepts the Human Relations and Equity Commission's recommendation of calling October National Bullying Prevention Month.
Great, thank you. Is there- Mr. Giddings?
I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I would just like to say, I did see the video. It was sent out to council, I believe, a week ago. It was very nicely done. So hopefully, everyone else will be able to watch it once we are able to link it up. We're just still working with technology, but- But yes, I think that I will be voting yes on this. If there's no further discussion, Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote? I believe everyone on council is back.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Back from outer space, yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes. Excuse me.
Yes. Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up is a presentation, Michigan Association of Planning. There's a certificate of recognition for Councilman Corbett. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, City Council is requested to recognize Councilman Bob Corbett's participation in the Michigan Association of Planning for his 20 years of membership and activity there. And typically, I would have a presentation, a certificate to give him, and we could all shake his hand and tell him congratulations. So congratulations, Bob.
Congratulations, Mr. Corbett. I don't think that this is something that we are voting on, but I will say I do appreciate that everything that you have done and definitely will be relying on you, as I have, for your wisdom. So thank you, and I'm glad that everyone was able to make it back to council. Mr. Corbett, it wasn't just you, half of council disappeared. So-
Seriously?
Yeah, seriously, it wasn't just you.
It took, I was struggling to get back all that time, so, all right. Well, glad to be back, nice to see you all, and carry on.
Congratulations, thank you. I think we will probably have some, I think there is some kind of certificate from MAP that is here for you, I believe. But I do appreciate everything that you have done and that I know you will continue to do for the council and for the city. All right, that is it for presentations. Next up would be public hearings. We have one special approval, 20-05, the used car dealership at 1900 East 14 Mile. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, the applicant requested special approval to allow a used car dealership in the M1 district located at 1900 East 14 Mile Road. The applicant is requesting to display up to six cars for sale on site. The hours of operations are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Site Plan Review Committee has reviewed and made the following recommendations. No overnight outdoor storage of vehicles in disrepair, vehicles awaiting for repair, auto parts or other materials. Vehicles for sale shall only be located in spaces indicated on the approved site plan. All vehicles shall be parked on a paved area having an asphalt or Portland cement binder approved by the city engineer so as to provide a permanent, durable, and dustless surface, and shall be graded and drained as to dispose of all surface water accumulated in the area.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Yeah, I'm back. And I move that the council concur with the recommendation of staff and grant special approval on the used car dealership application at 1900 East 14 Mile Road, subject to the conditions requested by the Site Plan Review Committee. No overnight storage of vehicles in disrepair, vehicles waiting for repair, auto parts or other materials. B, vehicles for sale shall only be located in the spaces located on the approved site plan. And C, all vehicles shall be parked on a paved area having an asphaltic or Portland cement binder approved by the city engineer so as to provide a permanent, durable, and dustless surface, and shall be graded, drained, as to dispose of all surface waters accumulated within the area.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilman-
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded.
Excuse me, Your Honor. It's me. Supposed to have a public hearing first before the motion.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, this was a public hearing. All right, so, meeting is now open to the public. If there is anyone who would like to comment specifically about the used car dealership, this would be the opportunity. Is there anyone who wants to speak about this? Mr. Ritchie, Ritchie? I'm sorry, I don't know perhaps your name, please. You need to unmute yourself. Oh, there we go.
I think I'm unmuted.
You are, please, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Joe Ritchie, I'm the petitioner, and I do want to make mention that there are no Sunday hours.
Just Saturday, just Monday to Friday and Saturday?
Monday to Friday is 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday is 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, thank you. Is there anything else? You have the floor. There's anything else you would like to share with us? You don't have to.
I'm really excited about coming to Madison Heights. I think we have a great location. The city has been wonderful. We've got a great support team in the building department, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak regarding- All right, I'm seeing no one. All right, so seeing none, I'm going to close this to the public. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I would renew my motion as verbalized a moment ago with the corrections from Mr. Ritchie with respect to the hour. There were just hour changes, right, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, the two-hour changes Saturday and the lack of Sunday hours. But otherwise, as previously stated.
Okay, wonderful. And Mrs. Clark, you'll support that again? Will you support that again?
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. All right. Is there any discussion from council? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Councilor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. All right, next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is when the public has the opportunity to speak to council. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This can be on anything. We've done the public hearing for the car dealership, so this can be on anything. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you could give us your name, address, your affiliation with the city. Anyone from the public want to speak? Okay, I have not seen anyone indicate that they would like to speak this evening, so I'm going to close meeting to the public. Next up is reports. Item D1, the City Manager Resolution Extending Temporary Waivers of Certain Zoning Regulations to Support Businesses During COVID-19. Mrs. Marsh, you have a report.
Yes, in order to assist our businesses, including restaurants with social distancing requirements, we are requesting that City Council extend and revise the authorization of the City Manager to temporarily waive certain zoning ordinances specifically related to outdoor seating and use, signage, and parking. This authority would be through December 31st of 2021 or when businesses could reopen at full capacity. Specifically, this resolution would allow for bars, restaurants, retail stores, and gyms to expand their outdoor dining, sales, or use area to utilize up to 30% of the required parking. This resolution serves as a municipal permission to allow expanded outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages for the purpose of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. This resolution will allow for temporary ability to post signage within certain parameters related to the hours of operation, pickup, curbside, and delivery, and specials. All fees related to these exceptions will be waived during this temporary period. Staff and I recommend that City Council approve this resolution temporarily granting the City Manager authority to waive certain zoning ordinances as described above through December 31st of 2021 or until businesses can reopen at full capacity.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
Like to make a motion that we approve this resolution, temporarily grant the City Manager authority to waive certain zoning ordinance as described above through December 31st, 2021, or until businesses can reopen to full capacity.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded regarding the Resolution Extending Temporary Waivers of Certain Zoning Regulations to Support Businesses During COVID-19. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss? Mr. Bliss?
Yes, thank you. Wondering what the potential implications would be if we had this run effectively forever? You know, what are the long-term implications? Because most of the properties, when you talk about 30% of parking, it's not getting used. Our parking standards right now have way too many spaces available for modern use. And so something like this, I think, really benefits a lot of the local businesses, particularly, you know, our restaurants, being able to have that outdoor seating is very critical. So, you know, it's something that I'd be open to. I mean, this extension happens, I believe we would be approving through, what, 2021 right now? So we've got some time to look at it, but I would like staff to look into if we can make these changes permanent. Either that or making changes to the parking that would enable each business to be able to expand outdoor seating on their own.
Okay, thank you. There any-
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's an interesting concept from Mr. Bliss. The first thought that crossed my head was, I'm not giving up on the business community. My point simply being that the rules that were originally generated, as you know, because you were there for a lot of it, was when capacity was nearing 100%. And you have to have a little separation with respect to the, with respect to the parking and the businesses and so on. Certainly, we can ask staff to revisit, but honestly, until we get somewhere near capacity again or remotely closer to it, it's premature. Now, in the interim, absolutely, I think it's a great idea. I think Mr. Bliss is one of the earlier proponents of this, so I think it was a good idea, but I don't think we can go running into this wall at full speed when we don't know, when we don't know two things, since we don't know who the survivors will be and what the capacity maximums will be, let's say, two years out from now. So, just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have any comments, discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilor Warback?
Hi, I would agree that I think that we, in many cases across the city, have too many parking spots for the use. And I am really enjoying seeing so many outdoor eating establishments and things like that that have been, that have come up as a result of this case. I agree that we've got some time, and this would be a good time for us to spend over the next year to really look at it and figure out case by case, even if there are some adjustments that we need to do in our ordinances going forward. But I see that there could be a silver lining in all of this and that our businesses have the opportunity to change their models up a little bit and make them more walkable, more user-friendly, more downtowny in some cases. So I would support the call of Mr. Bliss to look into this issue a little bit more.
Great, thank you. Anyone else on council, any comments, discussion regarding extending temporary waiver? Okay, I think that this is a great opportunity. We have just over a year to see how it works. And I think if we realize partway through that this is working, then by all means, we should look at extending this or making some sort of changes to move, if not this exactly, then some form of this into something permanent. So I would be in favor of looking into that as well. However, what is up for the vote tonight is a resolution to extend the temporary waiver. So everyone has done discussion. I'm going to ask the clerk to please take a roll call vote.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. It looks like we have a year to see how this is going to work out. Next up, we have bid awards and purchases. The contractual agreement with Gipels Webster for planning services. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, due to budget constraints due to COVID-19, we are always looking for operational efficiencies that will result on reoccurring savings. Actually, we do that all the time, but we are now proposing to contract out planning services. Staff is proposing, starting today, effective September 28, to have Gipels Webster be the contract planner for the city, handling the planning commission, site plan review, and all other city planning services and activities. To evaluate this as an option, we have been working directly with Gipels Webster to quote and structure the contract services for planning. Staff pursued a contract with this firm above other planning companies due to the quick turnaround needed to implement these services, and because their detailed knowledge of Madison Heights do their direct involvement in creating our master plan and our Parks and Recreation master plan. The first-year savings, that's the current fiscal year, is projected to be a minimum of $25,000. This assumes we utilize Gipels Webster for several special projects above their proposed monthly retainer specifically to move forward to become a redevelopment-ready community. The recommendation to conduct a zoning audit to identify areas where zoning updates are needed to align with the master plan, and the staff recommendation to review and update our ordinances. Savings in year two are projected to be beyond $65,000 annually. Steph and I recommend that City Council adopt this contract with Gipels Webster for planning services through December 31 of 2021.
Thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the contract with Gipels Webster for planning services. I think it goes through December 31, 2021.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded regarding the contractual agreement with Gipels Webster for planning services. Is there any discussion, counsel?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Well, Mr. Bliss, you made the motion. If you'd like to go first, if it's okay.
Sure, Your Honor. We did this back in 2014 with IT Services to some great success. And really, it comes down to a couple of things. The first is picking the right partner, and the second is ensuring that we've got some flexibility in the contract, because there's always going to be things that are going to come up. This checks both of those boxes. Because I'm on the planning commission, I've been at probably, what, a dozen or so meetings with Gipels Webster, and they've done such a phenomenal job, not just because of their expertise, but they've also been and become a real part of the community. And that's what I'm looking for in a contracted service. I want them to become a part of the community, just like our staff members do. You know, they they really invest in the community, and I was impressed by that, not just the the basic stuff, like as they're going through the master plan for planning and parks and rec, but even outside of that, like the music festival on Saturday. They are participating. They're one of the sponsors for that, because they they heard about it and they wanted to participate. And so I've been really impressed with them, and the flexibility that allows us to do all of these special projects. You know, we're anticipating a $65,000 annual savings, and that gives us a lot of room if we add in special projects, like the discussion we just had about expanding that outdoor seating or changing parking requirements. Those are projects that Gipels Webster can go down and work on for us on an ad hoc basis, pulling the experts that they have in-house to tackle each individual project uniquely. And then we'll still end up with that savings. You know, it may not be 65,000 every year, but we've got a really strong buffer there in this contract that gives us flexibility that we'll continue to see savings regardless of the special projects we bring out. So I'm an enthusiastic yes on this. I think it's great for the city. I think it's the right partner, and I really enjoy the flexibility of the contract. So good job to our staff for putting this together. This is the type of out-of-the-box thinking that's going to help us emerge from this pandemic stronger than what we went in.
Thank you. Mr. Corbett?
Yeah, so to offer some contrast, I do agree with the motion, and I think it's a stopgap measure, again, to get us where we're going. I'm much less sanguine about our long-term prospects. If you want to have a downtown development that's flourishing, if you want to have an industrial base that's strong, it's built on relationships. There is not a pure efficiency answer, and where I'm going with that is you do need to have staff in-house. You do need to have the planner. You need the economic development coordinator. You need those people with ties to this community. And if this sounds like some sort of a backhanded complaint against the vendor, that that's not it at all. I'm looking down the road. I'm looking for where we're going to be three, five, 10 years from now, and it's relationships. It's the ongoing. Yes, you have to use places like Giphol to to help you expedite major projects. We've done it a couple times now, I believe, with the master plan review. But but I think at some point, you're going to have to reboot the in-house planning department. And I don't think we should be looking down the road too far. I think we need to understand that those relationships are terribly important. I cannot name you one city, with a couple of possible exceptions, that that has not been true. But whether you're looking at the Troys, or the Royal Oaks, or even the Clausens, which are not unfair comparisons in general, they have had long-term staff that's been the people who's met with the developer, that's met with the entrepreneur, which has met with the restaurateur, and helped them work through the process. Yes, they can do that, but but long-term, it's a relationship. So this is fine. From my opinion, it's a it's a better-than-good answer. It's a great answer. But I think we should we should understand, and we should never take off the table of the day when we're able to reconstitute that department fully, in a more traditional sense, with people with the, and these names will make sense to you, the Jim Schaefer's and the Linda Williams, and the people who really got us kicked in the first gear when the former mayor was trying to promote the downtown so strongly. So just a note that I think we need to not take our eye off the ball on this going down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel have any other comments?
Your Honor?
Mrs. Clark?
Yeah, so I just wanted to chime in a little bit, like, it might surprise you at some of the perspective that this company is coming from. I've been attending the redevelopment-ready community certification classes with Melissa Marsh and with Mike Van Buren, and learning a lot about what their best practices are, and I'm excited to see that it aligns with a lot of modern technologies and ways of getting the word out and connecting the community to these redevelopment efforts. I know around, you know, online on Facebook, and what I hear from the neighbors, everyone's like, downtown area, what downtown area, when downtown area? And this is it, like, this is what's going to help carry us over that finish line. So I'm excited to vote yes on this tonight.
Thank you. Sir Saltus, was that you?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I had a few, I mean, I appreciate what they've done with the master plan and the recreation master plan, but do they, are they present tonight?
They are not.
So what what examples have they had that you could that you could name, if possible, like in terms of retail planning? Have they done anything similar to that? I mean, I'm concerned, like, we don't have the same fiasco that we had with BJ's Parking Lot, and which I think is a pretty much disaster in terms of planning. You know, I'm just concerned that they're acknowledged that, they realize things like that, and we don't make the same mistakes again. And I just wanted to know some examples of what they've done in terms of retail parking lot planning.
I'll have to find out specifically which ones they've done. I know that they do several other communities, so I'm positive they have a background in retail planning, at least reviewing the plans. They don't actually develop the planning parking lots. That's up to the developer. But they would be reviewing the plans and asking for revisions or changes and demanding what the city wants and needs. And that's a lot up to us, too, and making sure that they know exactly what we want and need when new developments come into town.
Well, but looking at past history, not just BJ's, which is more current, but even the Starbucks over there and Home Depot, which is, if anyone's tried it, it's, when it's busy, it's just absolute chaos. So I just really prefer that not happening again, type of repeat. But now, are they going to be involved in, and we got, I think we have the McDonald's that's going up there next to BJ's?
So those plans have already been approved, so they would not be involved in approving those plans as it has already passed.
But but can, is there a way that we can, just to bring this up, is there a way that we can look at that to make sure it doesn't make a problematic area even more of a problem?
I would have to check with Nick now that it's already passed every approval that the city has required about going back and changing our minds essentially on what the use is going to be. But that's definitely an issue, because we've already, the city has already approved that McDonald's, they've already approved the parking plan and the traffic flow, and they've already gone through that. So to go back now to change it would definitely be a change, and I know they've already got everything lined up, but I'll defer to Nick to elaborate.
Right, I'm not saying necessarily change, but again, taking in account, when I visit Smoothie Tropical Smoothie, and you got BJ's gas station, and you got traffic coming directly towards you while you're in line waiting for your tropical smoothie, is crazy. And especially with, and again, like I said, Starbucks, so I just would really hope that it doesn't turn into that type of mess again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Anyone else on council? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Saltus?
No.
Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
Vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the minutes, the regular City Council minute, meeting minutes from September 14. What is the wish of counsel? Can someone want to approve?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I'll move that we adopt the regular council meeting minutes of 9:14:20 as printed.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the regular City Council meeting minutes of September 14. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Warback?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geddings?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
Oh, yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, that is the end of our regular council meeting, so I now invite closing comments from counsel, starting with Mr. Corbett.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor, just best wishes to everybody for a changeover to fall that's a little more gentle than perhaps the winter we're going to have. But otherwise, that's it. Thank you much. Glad I made it back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yeah, Your Honor, really interesting, this meeting kicks off with a slight power outage that knocks half of us out of the meeting. I thought that might have been a bad omen, but we all got back, and I think we got a lot of great things accomplished for the city today. And there's some dialogue that I think will help kind of inspire what, you know, the next couple of years might look like, and the direction that we've given. So I'm really excited about that. I'm more excited, though, about this Saturday. The Trail Tunes 2020 Music Festival, Saturday from four to seven. You may have seen something about it. So much is going to be happening at the park. We used to, prior to the 08 recession, there used to be three summer festivals in the park. You know, so growing up here, I would, you know, have, there'd be a June, a July, and an August, and you have these different festivals that you'd be able to go to. And then up until this year, we had one, and it was great, you know, everybody come out for the fireworks, there was a band playing, and you'd be able to enjoy the park. And so that's that's something we didn't get this year, and this has been a really tough year for Madison Heights, an incredibly tough year. And we're not just talking about, you know, the pandemic that's affecting so many of our households and businesses, but we're also talking about the the quote-unquote Green Ooze incident and all of the the pain, heartache, and chaos that caused. And so this is a year where we need something. We need hope. We need to be able to come together, and I'm excited that we've been able to do that with the Arts Board, bringing over a dozen bands and musicians, some of the best around the area are coming out, and they're going to play along the One Mile Trail. So everything's going to be distanced, and then, you know, we're encouraging, you know, obviously, social distancing while you're at the park. And anytime that you're in a music area, or the areas with the three food trucks, you're going to be required to wear your mask. But it should be a really fun experience. It's going to be safe, and it's going to be a great way to be able to enjoy, you know, the community getting together in a way that we just haven't been able to do, and I'm excited about that. There's also going to be a mobile escape escape room there, so that'll be really fun. Try to get out. We've got more than a half a dozen community groups doing some amazing things like carnival games. We've got plant sale, kids crafts, even donations being accepted from our food pantry, so please bring those. It's going to be a really great event. There's something for everyone. And so I'd encourage everybody to drop by, even if just for 15, 20 minutes. Check it out, be a part of it. And you can follow the event on on Facebook, and we'll make sure that it's, it is on the city website right now, but we'll make sure that we make it really prominent as the next couple of days as we approach it. But you don't want to miss it, and honestly, co-chairing this event has been one of the the most fun and exciting things that I've been able to do while on council, mostly because of the people that I get to do with with in the Arts Board, and the response from the community, which has been overwhelmingly positive and exciting. Music heals. It brings people together, and this is going to be a great event that hopefully we can duplicate every single year, and take Madison Heights back, not just to one festival in the park every year, but now we'll get two, and that's going to be a really great future for us to look forward to. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is Warback.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to wish you a good holy day, and everybody who celebrates the holy days of this last month. I also am really excited about the Trail Tunes. It's going to be great. I'm excited because, you know, masks or not, I'm really excited to see some people's faces, or at least their their, like, you know, foreheads and eyes. I'm also very excited because as part of the Bloom Project, it's a committee of the Environmental Citizens Committee, we're hosting a native plant sale that same day in the, near the the City Hall, actually closer to the police station. And so please come out, and the money raised for that will help us to plant some additional native gardens and pollinator gardens throughout the city. So I'm really thrilled to have us be doing that. In addition to the native plant sale, we are going to be having our seed library. People are going to come out and bring some seeds, so anybody who would like to stop by and pick up some free vegetable seeds, or whatever it is that they are looking for from our seed library, they're welcome to do that. And then, of course, the Friends of the Madison Heights Library is having their pop-up book sale. And I'm really proud of the Friends of the Madison Heights Library. They've done so much in this last last year, and they've really picked up the pace. I purchased and received today my Friends of the Madison Heights Library Let Your Imagination Fly hooded sweatshirt. I had to wear it for the for a meeting today. It arrived like literally 20 minutes before we started. And so I'm just thrilled to have have this, and I've been seeing them on other people throughout the city. It is available to anybody to purchase. I believe it's on the city website or on the city Facebook page. There's a link to it. You can get it there. So I'm looking forward to seeing everybody, and make sure you mask up and keep your distance. But it'll be really wonderful to have an opportunity for our city to come together and some really But it'll be really wonderful to have an opportunity for our city to come together in some really special ways. In, what do they say, that something is the mother invention? And I think this, this time of change and difficulty that we've had has had us come up with some really special and interesting ways to still come together as a city, as a community. And I'm thrilled to see it, and I hope we can keep this going. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sir Brett Protowski, are you, anything you'd have liked to share this evening?
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Nice to see everyone, and thank you for having me.
All right. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I wanted to start by thanking Gary McGilvery. He was very active, meeting with me throughout the past couple of months to make sure that we got money that we so desperately need from Oakland County to clean up the Green Ooze. So I know there were press releases related to Jeremy Moss and Jim Ellison, which I'm very thankful for as well, who got $600,000 for us from the state. But Gary McGilvery and the county commissioner really came through with an additional $400,000 from Oakland County. So very thankful for that. I also want to thank everybody who participated in Restaurant Week. We don't have all of the numbers from the restaurants yet, but so far it seemed to be quite successful. At least it was successful for me, even though I probably gained a few pounds. And I did have the Restaurant Week winner. So every day, we had a photo competition to try to drive up our social media, really to build up a following for when we have this event in the future. And so each day, we picked a new winner. We actually picked them all today from last week. And these will be posted tomorrow with the gift certificates available after Wednesday. So we have Elizabeth Parker, Angela Freeman, Ron Harris II, Kyle Nody, K-O-N-T-E, and Patrick James. So congratulations to all five of you. You're welcome to pick up your gift certificates after Wednesday at City Hall in the City Manager's Office, or feel free to call the City Manager's Office, and we will arrange delivery or pickup or meetup or drop-off, curbside, whatever. And the last thing, the library is starting grab-and-go appointments and computer appointments starting this upcoming week on October the 1st. So we are about to expand some use there. You have to wear a mask. So that is it.
Thank you. Clerk, is there anything on your end this evening?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to announce that the absentee ballots were mailed late Thursday. You should be expecting them shortly in your mailbox. They haven't been delivered yet as of today because we didn't get any back today, so I know that. Just a reminder that if you do want to use the United States Postal Service to return your absentee ballot, there is no postage required on the return envelopes. Or you can drop the, your ballot into the drop box behind City Hall or bring it in person and hand it to us. That's fine, too. If you still need an absentee ballot, please contact their office. We can send you an application, or you can download one online, and you can send it in, bring it in, take a picture of it, email it in, and we'll get your ballot to you. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Geddings?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just hoping that the weatherman helps us out on Saturday. A lot of planning has gone into this concert in the park, if you will, and I think it'll be well-attended. I was hoping the rain stays away, and Mark and his group have a great turnout. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Just two things tonight. One, I just want to thank the Kindness Club for coming out and sharing the video, even though we couldn't see it. I know the link will be shared online and for bringing that message, having the kids come to a city council meeting and present is pretty exciting. The other thing I want to remind our residents is that the majority of our residents don't have kids in Madison District Schools. But the majority of those voters do have to vote on their school board. So if I could convince everyone to take a few minutes out of their day to take a look at who the candidates are and get a feel for them and think about, if it were your kids, if it were your district, who would you vote for? And make sure that you apply that to your application. There's a lot of great candidates out there. Crystal Proximera is doing candidate interviews for everyone on the ballot that she can reach. And I believe Amy Lewis is doing candidate interviews specifically for the Madison School Board. So if you can get out there, find the videos or find the interviews, learn a little bit more about the candidates, and make sure you vote for the Madison District School Board candidate that you would want to teach your children or be there for your children, even though they aren't part of your children's district. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Sir Soltis?
Thank you, your honor. First, I want to compliment Chief Lolito and his staff throughout this COVID pandemic. They were able to maintain a zero infection rate among their fire staff. And as you know, they've been on numerous calls over the months, last six months or so, treating and transporting infected COVID patients. So, and then the nursing home as well. So I think that just goes to credit for the chief's leadership as a direct result of success, huge success in my eyes. Secondly, I want to acknowledge that the superintendent of Madison Schools attended our meeting tonight. So welcome, sir. I appreciate it. And sorry that the video wasn't aired, but it'll be online. And third, after, again, being in, myself being in healthcare for over 17 years, personally, I fully support Medicare for All, the concept. I believe that human care, excuse me, healthcare is a human right. And I would like to present a resolution for council to vote on to encourage other cities to follow suit. Just real quick, some sample data. It'll be in that resolution, but during 2018, it was 8.5% of United residents, excuse me, citizens, without any coverage. That's 27.5 million. During the COVID, now they estimate over 2 million adults that were uninsured over that short period. There's been 45,000 annual deaths associated with lack of health insurance. And so there'll be more data involved, but I just, I take that to heart. And so I want to present that at another council meeting. And that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I think most of what I was going to talk about seems to have been covered, which is great. Just, you know, echo again, this Saturday, we've got the Arts Board, we've got the Subcommittee of the ECC has their plant sale, and then Friends of the Library are doing their book sale. If you aren't too tired after that, at 7 o'clock, Red Oaks Soccer Park is having an outdoor movie. So that's something everyone could head over to when they're done at Civic Park. With respect to the Green Ooze, yes, last week, I had a call from Senator Moss letting me know that it looked as though we were going to be getting some funding from the state, and we went for celebratory lunch, myself and him and Representative Ellison. I spent a lot of the last year, nine months pestering them about that. And I do appreciate that the county also stepped in with that as well. So thank you to Gary McGilvery for that as well with their 400. So I don't know that it's going to be enough, but it is something that seems to be finally, after all these years, coming to a head and will be getting cleaned up. But we are in ongoing litigation still, so it is still a long road ahead with that. Restaurant Week, I think most members of council were out doing, doing their bit to help with the restaurants. I actually bumped into Mr. Bliss and his wife on Saturday, I think it was. We both had the same idea to go to Woodpile, so I think that was great. On Monday, I had the pleasure of joining Congressman Levin at Emma's to celebrate Restaurant Week. So I think that this really did seem to be a good first year, and we'll take all the things that we learned, and we'll make next year even bigger. And who knows, maybe we'll turn it into Restaurant Month, although I don't know that my pocketbook could really handle that. Thank you to Mrs. Beaver for bringing the Kindness Club to us and for the presentation that we'll be able to share hopefully later this evening or tomorrow online for everybody else. And I think that is, that is about it. The time is 8:27. Our next meeting is going to be October 12th. Good night. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.